We seem to have an inordinate number of speakers signed up for unscheduled public appearances. And we do have a significant meeting to get through tonight, so I'm going to ask council as if we limit comments to two minutes per speaker to make sure we allow everyone to have a chance to speak. Are you guys okay if we do that?
Yes.
And council?
And I'd like residents to have precedence as well.
Okay. So what we're going to do is allow each person to have two minutes in terms of their presentation. And we are going to start off with town residents first. And so the first person I have signed up is Dr. Suzanne Hackett.
This is where I sit?
Yes ma'am. If you just come up, please state your name for the record into the microphone, and whether you're a resident or not, and you do have two minutes.
My name is Suzanne Hackett. I am a new resident to Castle Rock and a new resident to Colorado. We moved here a year ago. I had, I'm a psychologist, school psychologist. I had job offers in Fort Collins, Boulder, Cherry Creek, Colorado Springs, and Castle Rock. We chose Castle Rock for the growing shopping opportunities there availing here. We love to shop, and that's why we moved to Colorado. I've worked in three charter schools in Douglas County over the past year. We have wonderful schools here, wonderful teachers. When they get around the testing, there's a lot of good teaching going on concerning environmental education. My job is to help children generalize what they learn in school to real-life situations. I spend most of my time working with children with disabilities. Many of these children have trouble with understanding the impact of their decisions on the people around them. These children have trouble understanding cause-effect relationships. They have trouble understanding the long-term implications of decisions they make. Many of these children lack executive functioning skills necessary to predict the outcome of their decisions. I try to use a lot of stories and articles to talk about how people make poor decisions, and I'd like to read one to you just briefly. This is out of the AP. "Family settles pesticide-related wrongful death suit. The Toon family, whose two daughters died just days after fumatoxin was placed around their home, has settled a wrongful death lawsuit filed against the Bugman Pest Company. Authorities who investigated the deaths of these girls believe the girls might have inhaled phosphine fumes emitted from the fumatoxin pellets around their house." That was last year. Now, here's something that's just come up recently.
You do have 30 seconds left, ma'am.
Five leaders in this community make a decision to build a mall on a 200-acre plot, a habitat to two hun- to two hun- to many mammals. They exterminate a violated federal law in how he applied the poison to the community. Birds fell from the sky. Parents of children in neighboring schools inquire about the dangers. You may have a picture of a police officer telling a mother, "There's nothing dangerous about the toxin they used to kill all the animals." Here, within 15 hours after this pesticide was administered, there are no signs next to children waiting for a school bus. Do any of you live in this apartment complex? I don't think so.
Your two minutes are up, ma'am.
Most of these children are Hispanic. I don't think any of you are Hispanic, but these children were exposed to fumatoxin.
Your two minutes are up, ma'am.
With no signs. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'm sure many of you here before, and we did talk about outbursts, we talked about clapping, we talked about maintaining decorum and respect for each person that comes up and speaks. And so again, I'm just going to ask you to please maintain that decorum, and please, no clapping, no cheering, no jeering in terms of the individuals who do come up to speak. All right, next I have Deborah Buttram.
Hey. Deb Buttram, resident of Castle Rock since 2008. All right, first I want to thank the people who've been brave enough to stand up and speak for the animals when they could not speak for themselves. They know who they are, they're right behind me. I want to thank you for your bravery and for trying your hardest to save the wildlife. I was in the military for 22 years, retiring in 2012. As a public official, I believe that you people, you too sir, Mr. Heath, believe that you people are and should be held to a higher standard. Before I speak of what I witnessed on the killing field, I want to discuss with you people selfless service and what that means to me. Selfless service and leadership means that I put myself in front of living things that need protection. It means that I do not hurt, nor do I allow others to hurt living things that cannot protect themselves. As public servants to the community, you have failed in your duties. You allowed dollar signs, bogus claims of bringing jobs to the area, and stupidity to cloud your judgment. You allowed a missed cry from your own community. You allowed an outsider to come into our town and brutally murder our wildlife, poison our land, and put the public in jeopardy. You guys have failed the community.
You have 30 seconds left, ma'am.
Yeah, okay. The absolute disregard for the lives of other living beings is disgusting to me. I saw men throw aluminum phosphate pellets into burrows, stuff the holes with newspapers, and kick dirt over the newspapers, and allow those poor animals, many of which were underground with their babies, to die a slow horrific death. The ones who did claw their way out only ended up collapsing next to their burrows to suffer over the next 72 hours and die.
Your two minutes are up, ma'am.
Huh?
Your two minutes are up.
All right.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Next I have Beth Ann Sandrick.
Hi, I'm Beth Ann Sandrick, and I'm a resident of Castle Rock. And every time we come to a meeting, we start off with prayer, so I just wanted to pull together a few quotes from the Bible for you. This is from Psalms. "The Lord is good to all, and his mercy is over all that he has made." This one's from Genesis. "And to every beast of the earth, and to every bird of the heavens, and to everything that creeps on earth, everything that has the breath of life, I have given every green plant for food." This one's from Proverbs. "Open your mouth for the mute, for the rights of all who are destitute." This one's from Isaiah. "The wolf shall dwell with the lamb, and the leopard shall lie down with the young goat, and the calf and the lion, and the fat and calf together, and a little child shall lead them." This is another one from Isaiah. "The wolf and the lamb shall feed together; the lion shall eat straw like an ox, but the serpent's food shall be dust. They shall not hurt or destroy, or destroy all on my holy mountain." This one is from Job. "But ask the animals, and they will teach you; the birds of the air, and they will teach you." This one is from Psalms. "Your righteousness is like the mighty mountains; your judgments are like the great deep; you save humans and animals alike, O Lord." And I love this one from Matthew. "Blessed are the mercy, for they will receive mercy."
You have 30 seconds left, ma'am.
I believe that the best way to live your life is with compassion and mercy towards all, and it is never too late to change to that way of living. And I can guarantee you, you will feel so much better in your heart and soul, and you will have so many more fans in the world, and you can be a hero. I mean, just take the example of putting a small child in a crib with a bunny. Is it going to rip its head off, or is it going to pet it and love it? What do you think is going to happen? It's just never too late. I'm a neonatal nurse at Children's Hospital. If any of you had sick infants in your family, I would do the utmost best in my ability to take the best care of them and comfort them.
Thank you.
Please know that. Just want to give you guys a little guide to like the way you can possibly live it in your town.
Next I have Stacy Rogers.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Stacy Rogers. I live in the Meadows in Castle Rock. I've come to, I was going to speak, didn't know I had only two minutes versus four, so I'll speak fast. I don't know if you're aware, but there's a petition being circulated to put ordinance 2015-09 to a vote of the voters unless you repeal it as it is. I would be honored, Mayor Donahue, if you were the first person to sign my packet as a residence, resident of Castle Rock, I assume registered voter, followed by all the council members, because it is your right to have a say in what we do in our town, as is everyone else's. If you're not registered to vote, Google "Colorado voter registration," it's the first link. Takes you less than five minutes to sign up, and it should be active the next, by the next day. If you want to think about it, stop by the library, the Philip S. Miller Library. Someone will be manning the library out front by the flagpole every day during library hours up until maybe 6 o'clock. I would love to have your signatures. Just so you know, by myself, I'm up to 200 signatures since Saturday afternoon. I appreciate your time, and I look forward to seeing you outside to sign my petition, to note, to sign our petition as Castle Rock residents. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Rogers. Next I have Kristi Chanel.
Good evening. I'm Kristi Chanel, resident here. I sit before you this evening as a Castle Rock resident to share with you my thoughts and feelings about the mall development and the prairie dogs, and I thank you for listening to me tonight. I am a mother of two. I am a female entrepreneur, and I'm a volunteer in a Castle Rock community organization. I am an everyday community member in your community, which may seem like one small life out of thousands that live here. But today I represent myself, my family, friends near and far, and fellow Castle Rock residents who want to express these thoughts but are unable to be here this evening. For years, I've expressed to everyone how proud I am to live in Castle Rock, that this was a community that seemed to really care about the residents' thoughts and concerns, and strive to make it a town worthy of the national rankings it received. My husband and I were delighted to start our family here. However, over the past month, our perspectives have changed. What we have witnessed over the past few weeks has been particularly disheartening and simply sad. We are ashamed at how the prairie dog issue has been handled. It's true that I have not been involved in all of the development meetings. We don't know the ins and outs of what's been discussed, and I'm not going to sit here and pretend that I have. This is just my perspective on how things are coming across to the residents. We have witnessed the killing of what some call small rodents, but our sentient beings-
You have 30 seconds left, ma'am.
-that have family structures, feel pain and fear just like we do. I have driven past an area that was once flourishing with life, but now desolate with death. And I have watched people seem to poke fun at this and mock the support and joke publicly online, but I want to tell you that we don't find it humorous. As I mentioned, I'm just one voter out of 1,000 that live here. I'm just another face in the crowd, but don't understand, don't underestimate the others who feel the same way I do. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next I have John Buckley.
My name is John Buckley, Castle Rock resident. As you know, I was here two weeks ago, and the mayor interrupted my four minutes of freedom of speech. And I did not appreciate that. And I know that the mayor believes very strongly in the Second Amendment, but to not believe and not respect the First Amendment, I find very disappointing and disgusting for somebody in such a position. This council has a reputation in Castle Rock of not listening, not listening to the residents, not listening to the voters, not listening to the citizens who thought that they were, that you would represent them when they enabled you to sit in the seats in which you're sitting. Various groups come before this council with the anticipation, the expectation, that you will listen to their voices, you will be, that they will be heard, that they will be respected, and that their input will be meaningful to you. They go away disappointed. They realize that you don't seem to care. You don't care about what they think, what they believe, and what they are saying, that you don't listen. You do not take to heart what people are saying.
You do have 30 seconds left, Mr. Buckley.
We're willing to listen to you. We don't hear much from any of you when you have an opportunity to speak to the issues. We wonder who limits your, or what limits your freedom of speech. Tonight, we're asking two things. First, that you listen, that you listen to the people that are here to speak to you. And secondly, we ask that you respect freedom of speech.
Thank you, sir. Next I have Keith Latimore Walsh.
This is my third time here. I'm Keith Latimore Walsh. I'm with Wildlands Defense. I have a dire warning for anyone hearing my voice at this meeting. This country will fail to see its 300th birthday if we rely on decisions like this council has made. This great nation will wither and die, imploding in on itself. But I warn you, a change is coming. I'm warning you that now, every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Jill Steele.
Good evening. Thank you. I've only been a resident to Castle Rock for just under two years, and was so excited to move here. My parents have lived here for over 20 years, and I have always thought of it as such a quaint, beautiful, small town. I was finally able to get my household and move here, being the oldest sibling and a single mom. My daughter has grown now, so I felt it was my duty to be close to my aging parents. I have thanked God every day for my home here and the neighborhood I live in, and being close to downtown historic Castle Rock. I look out the window now and see mountains and hills instead of looking at the backside of my old neighbor's house, as I used to. I've been so grateful to see and hear birds all over my yard and watch the squirrels climb from tree to tree. It's been so blissful. Now I seriously question whether or not I should live here, and it's been extremely sad and distraught for me, for it's been my dream to be here. But from seeing and witnessing the unspeakable actions I saw last week, I'm just overcome with sadness at what this town has been able to do. What we bore witness, but what we bore witness to last week at the slaughter site was horrific, completely unjustifiable, and incredibly violent. Watching helplessly with two officers at the scene protecting the coward, Ronnie, the killer and poisoner, was so heart-wrenching. We caught, we watched the killer callously throw aluminum phosphate down prairie dogs' holes and then cover the holes, thus burying them, and their poison dying a most gruesome, tragic, horrible, painful death, many being mothers giving birth, not leaving their burrows.
You have 30 seconds left, ma'am.
Another cowardly act. That's why Alberta Development probably chose to wait two months, so that the babies would not leave their burrows. Also, more than prairie dogs were killed. The toxic cost in poison has affected other wildlife in the area. Other animals have died, such as rabbits and birds, and probably others. Even people were taken to the hospital due to the toxic poison. The food chain for other species has been broken now in the area. We must protect the innocent, those that have no voice, those that can't defend themselves. Animals deserve rights, and it's our means to assert them.
Thank you, Ms. Steele. Your two minutes are up. Next I have Monica Briss.
In God we trust. We do trust him. Hi, my name's Monica Brissay. I'm a resident, I have been a resident of Castle Rock for over 30 years. My husband and I raised our family here. We chose to live here because it was a great small town with open spaces and wildlife. I do not live here because I like to shop. Park Meadows is 10 minutes away. The Promenade Mall will only bring more traffic and congestion to the Meadows subdivision. You brag that our, that the town is 40 percent open space. This is misleading because you count every drainage area and landscaped park. There is very little open space that allows wildlife to live undisturbed. I am absolutely furious about the poisoning of one of the largest remaining prairie dog colonies on the Front Range. I photographed a bald eagle on the site two weeks ago. Then, just a week ago, I witnessed the mass poisoning. I saw prairie dogs, rabbits, and birds suffering and dying. I know there have been countless unseen deaths of hawks, eagles, owls, foxes, and coyotes from eating the poisoned animals. The town council had every opportunity to do the right thing. You could have actually listened to the people begging you for time to relocate these animals.
You have 30 seconds left.
You have, you could have rezoned the area. You could have required the developer to protect or at least relocate the wildlife. You could have made a statement with your actions showing the country that the town of Castle Rock values the environment, wild land, and wildlife. You could have been heroes. Instead, you have chosen, you have proven yourselves to be shady, small-minded, and incompetent.
Your two minutes are up, ma'am.
You have stained this town with poison and the blood of our wildlife.
Thank you. Next I have Claudia Stickney.
Thank you. My name's Claudia Stickney, and I live in the Meadows. I'm a business owner in Castle Rock. I've lived here for about 15 years now, and I just want to say that there's no legitimate reason or excuse for what you have allowed to happen to the prairie dogs. Those of us who care about the environment and Castle Rock on the whole will not let it go unanswered. I would think that as government officials, you would hold yourselves to a professional standard of behavior. Every one of you has said that you're dedicated to serve the needs of Castle Rock and care about its well-being. One of you has called a nationally recognized Wildlands Defense Organization a special interest group. This member of council has publicly said, and I quote, "I am not a special interest guy." You have said, and again I quote, "That you are concerned about the proposed doubling of housing densities in the lanterns development, and that you don't want to see a wall of traffic in your area like there is in the Meadows Founder's Parkway area. So what is that but a self-interest group, rather than a concern about the town as a whole?" There's been a lot of name-calling and rhetoric about these issues recently. Some of it very unprofessional, and it makes me sad to see it on both sides. But it makes me most sad to see a member of this town council consider it acceptable to allow someone to refer to a Castle Rock resident and activist as a bitch on his Facebook page and to not call it out. As to this meeting, I simply want to ask at this meeting to ask the council, and I may not be using the correct language, but I want to ask you-
You do have 30 seconds, ma'am.
...to not act on any items regarding the promenade until the petitions are counted and certified. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Alexandra Rinaldi.
My name is Alexandra Rinaldi, and I'm a resident of Castle Rock. I've been a Castle Rock resident for 13 years, and I'm appalled.
Stop. Stop. Stop.
Stop laughing.
Look, I'm going to have to ask everyone to stop at this point.
I feel very disrespected, sir.
Now, the councilman is not saying anything.
But they're laughing at my speech.
You can judge by his?
They're really laughing.
No more. No more. What, this is the last warning. There will be no more outbursts from the crowd. I won't be asking people to leave again if we go through this. I don't want to ask people to leave. I'm asking that everyone be respectful of the people that are talking, and let's get through this. Let's get through these comments. John, can I ask you to have this gentleman removed, please? Up front, here in the red turtleneck.
This person here is not a, not you, Mayor Donahue.
Officer, would you please have that lady removed as well?
Give her a minute.
Yes. Ma'am, I'm just going to need you to leave, please. We're asking everyone just to please be respectful. If you are not respectful, I will ask you to leave.
Officer, would you please escort them out?
Is this part of my two minutes?
No, no, you get a new two minutes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I've been a Castle Rock resident for 13 years, and I'm appalled that you would allow our beautiful landscape to be replaced with unsightly concrete and cheap retail stores. Not only have you destroyed our wildlife, but you have also divided our town. Ask yourself if your arrogant views on our environment and what your vision is really meet the expectations of the majority of the residents. This matter was handled in an unspeakable manner and cost the lives of 1,000 creatures that had every right to live on this earth. I am aware that money, greed, and power played in all of your decisions. You were so far removed from our pleas at both town hall meetings and believed that we would just go away after the extermination, but you were wrong. After this atrocity, we will fight harder and resist even more until you're all voted out of office. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
There you go.
Ma'am, I asked you to leave last time, and so I'm going to ask you again, I'm going to ask you again to please leave. Please leave.
Bravo. Well done, guys. I'll leave the room, but I'm not leaving.
Next I have Megan Arson.
Yes, it's Megan, which is a common name. Arson, please get it right. I have respect for you, Mr. Donahue, but it's very quickly fading. I'm Megan Arson. I'm a resident of Castle Rock. I'm also a small business owner, and I'm here to address specifically Mr. Teal and town council. Mr. Teal, you've committed several offenses under Town Code, Municipal Code, Section 9, Code 4, Clause 120, under Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare. It is unlawful for any person to commit harassment. Harassment, if you're unaware, is also categorized as repeatedly insults, taunts, or challenges another in a manner likely to provoke a violent or disorderly response. This, sir, is your face and your Facebook messages you've been sending and propaganda you've been posting. You're also guilty of defamation of character towards not only Wildlands Defense, Deanna Meyer and Brian Ertz, under tort law. I don't know if you're aware of law. From your Facebook, you don't seem very educated. But I have suspicions that the town council, and I would pay attention, folks, because I'm filing a complaint with Supreme Court, you are all guilty of conflict of interest. I'd like to bring your attention to Colorado Revised Statute 2418109 prohibits a local government employee from engaging in a private substantial financial transaction with a person whom he inspects or supervises in the course of his official duties, or from performing an official act directly and substantially benefiting economically a business or undertaking in which he has a substantial financial interest or for which he's engaged as a council member or agent.
You have, you have 30 seconds left, ma'am.
Thank you. On your Facebook page, you had relations with Mike Boyle, the restaurant show gentleman who suggested we shoot him and barbecue him. In town council, I never saw one council member, none of you, on sight. You had distressed citizens protesting the Promenade and bearing witness to the massacre that occurred. Pardon me for being inquisitive, but where were you when those you represent were in agony? I hope to see you in court.
Thank you, ma'am. Next I have Holly M.
Hello, I am Holly. I'm 14, and I go to Mesa Middle School. And first I would like to address all of you, please wake up. We're here pleading to you. None of you, all of you look like you're bored. Please correct that. What the heck? We're speaking to you. And Teal, don't you dare snarl at us. That is not okay. Aluminum phosphate, which was used to slaughter thousands of prairie dogs, is also dangerous to humans and other wild lives. Are you aware that bunnies and birds, bunnies were dying and birds were falling from the sky, exactly like the end of the world? We will also see an increased pollution rate, because as population goes up, so does pollution. We will also have a loss of jobs at the outlet malls, and just saying, I don't want 725 for these new amazing jobs. That's not okay. That's not okay. There is also going to be an increased crime rate because as as population goes up, so does crime. We don't want them all. We don't want it at all. Thank you very much, no. And also, have you seen this land? This land is decaying away. This is not building land and it's poisoned on top of that. I also want to reinstate a like sort of poem thing that one lady said last time. As each tree is cut down, every river run dry, each fish eaten and every prairie dog exterminated, you will realize that you cannot eat money and money will be worthless.
You do have thirty seconds left.
Thank you. This is a cheap way to get money. Alberta people, the ones that we're exterminating, what are you teaching your kids? Your kids are gonna hate you if they figured out that what you were doing. Also, I have freedom of speech. I can applaud as I plead. You can't take my rights away. No one can. It's my First Amendment rights. And if you don't listen to us, you're letting history repeat itself. Hitler didn't listen either.
Hey, thank you. Next, I have Carrie Butler.
Good evening. I'm Carrie Butler and I'm here this evening to speak out against your actions concerning the wildlife at the site of the proposed Promenade Development. I am a ten-year resident of Castle Pines and a twenty-year resident of Colorado. Obviously, I have seen the decimation of a lot of land in the name of development during that time. But this situation is different. This is Castle Rock, where we are, according to the Chamber of Commerce, known for breathtaking scenery and rolling acres of buttes, mesas and nature trails. I believe this type of mega mall development will destroy that vision and will turn Castle Rock into another generic sanitized big box suburb stripped of its natural beauty and wildlife. What's done is done and no matter how upsetting it is to us, we can't bring back the wildlife that you destroyed and the land you allowed to be poisoned. What I can do is share my concerns with my community and it's a big community. And I can personally vote against this project by taking all of my disposable income from my family of five out of Castle Rock. I believe this is a pivotal event in the fight to save what wildlife and natural land remains on our Front Range. Through social media, the world has now seen your despicable actions, immature behavior and even laughter at the sight of dying wildlife. These amazing, dedicated, intelligent, compassionate people are fighting for what's right and I, as a strong-
Seconds left, ma'am. Thirty seconds.
...educated, Christian woman will walk beside them any day. They gave you the opportunity to handle this situation humanely and move these animals, but because of your lack of foresight, you now have a major resistance on your hands. I do believe you have an opportunity here to turn things around. Moving forward, Castle Rock needs to stand apart and innovate and have innovative development that will benefit this town and our economy while also protecting our wildlife and our way of life. There's nothing innovative-
Your two minutes are up. Great, thank you, Ms. Butler. Uh, next, I have Regina Perosto.
Thank you. I had a four-minute talk, so I guess I'm gonna just do it, the quick thing. I'm just gonna skip right to the end. I am a graduate degree in toxicology and I've been watching this with horror after working for over twenty years with the EPA and doing risk assessments, environmental impact statements. I find it beyond belief that you guys have not managed this in a more, I'm sorry, I'm just so upset, I can't believe how horrible I feel. Anyway, so I have a book, I'll give it to you guys. You did not honor your responsibility. In the finance agreement that you guys signed, you have a safety clause that you all signed and says the town council finds and declares that this ordinance is promulgated and adopted for the public health, safety and welfare and this ordinance bears a rational relation to legislative objects sought to be attained. Obviously, it's not rational in any way, shape or form. Shame on you. You did not honor your commitment to the community. You have a transparency portal up on your Castle Rock Facebook, well, I'm sorry, it's on your webpage and you say that this site was created as part of a countrywide countywide effort to increase accountability to residents. We hope it improves your access to information as well as your knowledge on how to participate in public discussion. Well, we all looked at it and not one of us got a chance for you guys to listen. And if you'd look up maybe once in a while, Ms. Allentyne, you'd understand what we're talking about. You did not honor your legacy. In the vision statement, you have the very last paragraph says, "All that Castle Rock is, its history, unique sense of place, economic self-sufficiency and strong community participation and leadership reflects not only where it has been but paves the way where it's headed."
You have thirty seconds left, ma'am.
Our legacy is our future. Shame on you. You guys don't understand what legacy means and what it means to honor your community.
Thank you.
Since we have some new attendees here tonight, new introduction. I'm Dr. Fred Gibson, retired Air Force Lieutenant Colonel, Air Force Academy graduate, nineteen seventy-four. As if I needed those bona fides to have my voice heard about what happens in a place that everybody shares. I'm not here, though, to milk my military experience, just to indicate that the activists who've spoken here the past month represent a wide, varied constituency who are appalled at the negligence, cruelty and insensitivity of the past months. On behalf then of the Castle Rock Town Council, I welcome everyone to another installment of governance theater. And I'd like to thank the council for continuing to educate us about the systems that affect our lives. They taught us what governance is really like in the real world. They've helped us learn about some of these processes like the referendum process. And this week, they're opening a window to us about the nature of the political spectrum. We often think of the political spectrum as a line where the values or platforms separate groups with lefts on one end and rights on the other. But it may be more accurate to think of that spectrum as a horseshoe where the ends come closer together. What is it that draws these groups together? It's probably a shared value they did not often think about. In this case, it was a shared concern that constituents of locality have a voice in what happens to their lives and land. And those values, those concerns are what we have seen repeatedly violated recently.
You have thirty seconds left.
We've seen the council turn a deaf ear to petitioners. We've seen them close their eyes to the very real public danger posed by the poisoning of the prairie dogs and we've seen them make major decisions affecting the quality of life for all of Castle Rock and Colorado residents. So the question is, what are we going to do about it? I offer up the possibility of taking the next step in our civics orientation. Let's all work together to begin immediately the process that will result in the recall of the entire Castle Rock Town Council.
Hey, thank you. Next, I have Deanna Meyer.
Hello, Mr. Teal. I'm Deanna Meyer. I'm a board member of Wildlands Defense. I have lived here in Douglas County for forty-three years. I was raised on Happy Canyon Road when there were three homes there. This is my community, contrary to what Mr. Teal said on his page that I, this is not my community. He also threatened me in a way, saying that he was gonna spread my stupid message to the world, changed my wording on the message and re-quoted it on his Facebook page. As I scroll down his Facebook page, I see him chiding Obama because he's black, talking about Indian people because they don't know how to speak English. And I found several different things that I have pictures of as well. You guys are town council members. Now, I don't know why that's okay. I don't know how that's okay, but to do to portray yourself to the world as a bigot, as somebody who's going to go ahead and say terrible things like that to everybody, right there on your public Facebook page is appalling. I don't understand how that happens. I think each and every one of you is disgusting. You've sat here and listened to us at the last two town council meetings and not listened to a word any of us has said. The first time we came here, we were pretty passionate and we were pretty open-hearted and we bled out to you, asking you to please help us with this situation, turned all deaf ears. The second time, you have an elderly man removed, the police didn't even want to do it, which was very obvious from everybody who was watching on. Fox News caught it and caught created a whole huge uproar there. You removed a fourteen-year-old girl from here who was just starting to learn about the political system.
You have thirty seconds left.
And she sure is learning about the political system and how corrupt it is. Then we come in here today, we have a four-minute limit. We're allowed to speak four minutes and you cut it to two. Everything you've done is wrong. It's morally wrong, it's ethically wrong, what you did to those prairie dogs and allowed that to happen is wrong and we will come after this and you all need to be recalled.
Next, I have Randy Meyer.
Well, as you know, I'm Randy Meyer. I've lived here all my life, forty-five years. I've lived in this town for twenty-two of those years. Thank God I don't live here anymore. In all my years I have been here, I've never seen such unprofessional conduct, conduct, especially by those that should lead by example. Freezing an individual's Facebook page, cutting and pasting for her to do your own needs. I mean, that's very, very unprofessional. And then lying about thirty emails that you got of people that approved. I know a lot of people in this town, know a lot of people that can do checking. You lied. And not only that, does anybody notice anyone here that's been in support of this mall? Saying that I, again, I know a lot of people. Maybe, maybe if you're lucky, there's thirty percent of the people in this town that wanted this mall? Maybe? By the way, the last I checked, thirty percent won't save you or get you elected and it won't save you from being recalled. This is why you will soon see the consequences of what happens when you don't listen to the people. After all, this is not your town or the developers' town. This is our town.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Meyer. Next, I have Michaela. All right, I have Debbie Stalker. Go ahead and sign up, sir.
Hello, my name is Debbie Stalker. I am a resident of Castle Rock. I have lived here about sixteen years. I'm an educator in this town. But something I'm more proud of is that I was born and raised in the military. I have a father who was a Navy captain and raised me to believe in the way I conduct myself. And there's a phrase in the military called "conduct unbecoming." And I really stress that because I want this council to know, I believe that somewhere, somehow, you're representing this town because you care about it too. I want to believe that. So I'm really asking you to stop for a minute and listen to your town. We are speaking, we are loud. I don't think you expected this behavior when these decisions were made. I'm fairly certain that none of you were expecting this kind of uproar, but we are, we are as loud as we can be to say that the decisions you're making for our town aren't what we want. And I'm asking you to just remember that it is not too late to say, okay, so mistakes were made and we can change these things. But it is important to remember that carrying yourself in a way that represents who we are, we all moved here because we love our small town. We want to hold on to all the things that this small town gives all of us, all of our family, all of our children and maybe my grandchildren one day. I want this to be my home, but I also want my town council to represent what our small town believes in. And that's what we're saying to you. So please know, it's not too late to change your mind, it's not too late to let us be heard and make decisions based on what your voters, the people you represent, are asking for. I did not have anything planned tonight. This is truly just my feelings and my passion coming out, listening. I've never been to a town council meeting before. I can't believe I'm sitting here now, but I want you to know, it's because I care and I want to believe that somewhere, somehow, you all care too.
You have thirty seconds left, Ms. Stalker.
And I'm just saying-
Thank you.
I just am asking you to just pause and don't listen to name-calling and don't listen to overzealous, just listen to reason, listen to to what we are trying to say. Some of us are passionate, some of us are animal lovers, some of us are business owners, some of us are educators, some of us just have our families here. Please, please, Mayor Donahue, just advise this town council to stop and let's listen to what our town is asking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stalker. And do we have that last gentleman who signed up? Why don't you go go ahead and come on up, sir, state your name for the record, whether you're a resident. And this will be the the last speaker of the evening.
Oh, really? Uh, hi, my name is Frank Early. I'm a Colorado resident and have been here my whole life. I was born here. I just want to do two things. I'm not gonna take the whole two minutes. I want fifteen seconds of silence for the animals that we've killed, fifteen seconds for the animals that are going to die due to this killing, fifteen seconds for the killing
Okay, thank you, Mr. Early. And with that, we'll end the unscheduled-